Are we on?
Probably.
Yeah.
If you turn the mics on, if I turn mine off.
Is it off or is it not?
Off. But if I turn mine off over here.
Sweet.
Ah, that's good control to have. Especially keep Joe under control when he starts going.
Yeah.
Other meetings that I support them. Well, did not respect that and we had.
All right. Now you do.
At least I won't have to hear him on the recording. All right, are we ready to start?
Yeah, another thirty seconds.
All right, well, I won't rush anybody then. Those people who really want to come.
We can't start her.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
All right, I'll wait for my ten seconds to go.
Oh, how do I turn this thing off?
But now whenever you.
All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at six thirty. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the body of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll go to Angela for the roll call of Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Walthius.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Graybill.
Here.
Commissioner Melter and Journey both let me know that they would be absent today.
All right. All right, so this is an op, uh, we're gonna move to public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on topics that are not on the agenda. We have no one here for public comment today, so we'll move on to our public hearings. Um, we have LA two five dash zero one. The transportation, transportation system plan and North Sweet Home area plan.
Open, open the public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing at six thirty-two.
And do the expertise information, that piece of it.
Yes.
I know it's been a while.
I have that right. There you go. All right, um, we're gonna have declarations of commission. Do you have any personal bias?
No.
No.
I have none.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
I have none. Any expertise information?
No.
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 And I have none. All right, now we'll go to Angela for the staff report.
Just a reminder, if you all can make sure that the microphone is right in your face, so it can be picked up by the people online.
Yes.
All right, thank you all for being here. Um, we're going to do this a little bit different. Um, as I stated earlier, we're gonna go through both findings. Um, and then turn it over to our consultants that are here, Garth and Andrew. Um, they'll go through their presentation and then we'll open it up for questions. That way we can kinda just get through it all and then we can do questions after that, if that's okay with all of the Commissioners. Okay. All right, here we go. I will try, Henry, I promise. All right, City of Sweet Home twenty twenty-five Transportation System Plan. The twenty twenty-five Sweet Home Transportation, Transportation System Plan, TSP, provides direction for the current and long-range planning of the transportation system. The plan was prepared in collaboration with city staff, stakeholders, and community residents and documents. The research, analysis, and community involvement process used to identify system assets and needs. The intent with this plan is to add it to an amendment to and sub-element of the current comprehensive plan. The twenty-ten Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan includes goals for transportation systems in Sweet Home, incorporating statewide planning goal twelve, which is transportation. The plan also adds community goals to the balance, the development needs of future land development with a system that serves all users. This transportation system plan is compatible with these goals and further details, recommendations, and improvements projects to align the, with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The draft twenty twenty-five TSP is proposed for adoption as an amendment to the comprehensive plan and a contextual document within the plan that replaces the two thousand and five Transportation System Plan. This document includes criteria of approval and findings of compliance that support the type for legislative procedure for plan adoption. I, I am going to read through this as summary, I'm not going to read through the entire thing, so I'm gonna summarize each of the chapters, so.
Okay.
Um, through decision criteria. Amendments to the comprehensive plan or development code test shall be approved if the evidence can substantiate the following. A, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the following. One, traffic generation and circulation patterns. The draft twenty twenty-five TSP outlines the current transportation conditions in Sweet Home, identifies gaps and areas for improvement, and establishes clear goals for the city to consider for future planning. The plan was developed with community input and is based on needs, opportunities, and anticipated funding for the transportation system. The plan is a long-term planning document. There will be no new traffic generated or changes to circulation pa- patterns, therefore the criteria is satisfied. Two, demand for public facilities and services. The proposed plan does not include any improvements that will increase demand for public services. All proposed improvements are intended to satisfy existing demand and future demand resulting from population growth. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. Number three, level of park and recreation facilities. The draft twenty twenty-five TSP does not include any changes in the level of park and recreation facilities, therefore this criteria is satisfied. B, a demonstrated need exists for the proposed amendment. The current comprehensive plan includes the goal for a well-planned-out comprehensive transportation system that balances the need for future land development with a system that serves all users. The last transportation system plan was mentioned in the comprehensive plan was completed in two thousand and five. The city of Sweet Home has grown substantially since that time. TSPs are mandated by the Oregon's land, Oregon's land use laws to promote thoughtful growth and assist local agencies in developing transportation systems that meet the needs of residents. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. C, the proposed amendment complies with all of the applicable state, statewide planning goals and administrative rule requirements. In addition, amendments to the development code shall conform with the applicable city comprehensive plan policies. So, goal one, citizen involvement, is to develop a citizen involvement program that ensures the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process, to provide for widespread citizen involvement, to assure effective two-way communication with citizens, to provide the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process, to assure that technical information is available in an understandable form, to assure that citizens will receive a response from policymakers, and to ensure funding for the citizen involvement program. The process for adoption of the amendment, amendment complies with goal one and meets the requirements of the state's citizen involvement provisions. Goal two, land use planning. To establish a land use planning process and policy framework as basis for all decisions and actions related to use of land and to assure an adequate factual base for such decisions and actions, city, county, state, and federal agency and special district plans and actions related to land use shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan of cities and counties and regional plans adopted under ORS Chapter two six eight. The process for the adoption of the amendment complies with goal two and meets the requirements of the state's land use planning provisions. Goal three, agricultural lands. Goal three is not applicable to the draft twenty twenty-five TSP. Goal four, forest land is not applicable to the draft twenty twenty-five TSP. Goal five, natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. To protect natural resources and conserve scenic and historic areas and open spaces, local governments shall adopt programs that will protect natural resources and conserve scenic, historic, and open space resources for present and future generations. These resources promote a healthy environment and natural landscape that contributes to Oregon's livability. The process for adoption for the amendment complies with goal five and meets the requirements of state natural resources, scenic and historic areas, and open spaces provisions. Goal six, air, water, and land resource quality. To maintain and improve the quality of air, water, and land resources of the state, all waste and processed discharges for, from future development, when combined with such discharges from existing developments, shall not threaten to violate or violate applicable state or federal environmental quality statutes, rules, and standards. Recommendations and development projects in the Transportation System Plan were designed to protect air, water, and land resources from pollution and contaminants. The recommendations support the enhancement of air, air, water, and land quality, ensuring the amendment aligns with the statewide planning goal six. Excuse me. Goal seven, areas subject to natural disasters and hazards. To protect people and property from natural hazards, local government shall adopt comprehensive plans, inventories, policies, and implementing measures to reduce risk to people and property from natural hazards. This amendment does not directly address potential natural disasters and has, hazards. These hazards are addressed in other planning processes, therefore the amendment is consistent with the statewide planning goal seven. Goal eight, recreation needs. Goal eight is not applicable to the draft twenty twenty-five TSP. Goal nine, economic development. The goal requires that local comprehensive plans and policies contribute to a stable and healthy economy in all regions of the state. This amendment does not directly in, impact or inhibit economic activities or propose any zoning designation changes. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal nine and meets the requirements of the state's economic development provisions. Goal ten, housing. The goal requires the city's plans provide for the appropriate type, location, and phasing of public facilities and services sufficient to support housing development in areas present, presently developed or undergoing development or redevelopment. The provisions of this amendment do not address the planning or development of housing. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal ten and meets the requirements of the state's housing provisions. Goal eleven, public facilities and services. Goal eleven requires cities and counties to plan and develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of public facilities and services to serve as a framework for urban and rural development. The goal requires that urban and rural development be guided and supported by types and levels of urban and rural public facilities and services appropriate for but limited to the needs and requirements of the urban, urbanization and rural areas to be served. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal eleven and meets the requirements of the state's public facilities and service provisions. Goal twelve, transportation. Goal twelve requires cities, counties, met- metropolitan planning organizations and ODOT to provide and encourage a safe, convenient, and economic transportation system. This is accomplished through development of transportation system plans based on inventories of local, regional, state transportation needs. Goal twelve is implemented through the OAR six sixty, Division twelve, also known as Transportation Planning Rule, or TPR. The TPR contains numerous requirements governing transportation planning and pro- project development. Um, see the OAR six sixty, Division twelve section of this document for findings of compliance with the TPR. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal twelve and meets the requirement in state transportation provisions. Goal thirteen, energy conservation. To conserve energy, land and uses developed on land shall be managed and controlled so as to maximize the conservation of all forms of energy based upon sound economic principles. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal thirteen and meets the requirements of the state's energy conservation provisions. Goal fourteen, urbanization. To provide for orderly and efficient transition from rural to urban land use to accommodate urban population and urban employment inside urban growth boundaries to ensure efficient use of land and to provide for livable communities. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal fourteen and meets the requirements of the state urbanization provisions. Goal fifteen, Willamette River Greenway. Goal fifteen is not applicable to the draft twenty twenty-five TSP. Goal sixteen, Estuwan, Estuaryan, resources, it's not applicable to the, um, twenty twenty-five TSP. Goal seventeen, coastal shorelines, is not applicable to the twenty twenty-five TSP. Goal eighteen, beaches and doom, dunes, and goal nineteen, ocean resources are also not com- applicable to the TSP. Conforming with applicable city comprehensive plan policies, the two thousand Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan, updated in twenty-ten, includes transportation system goals outlined in Chapter six. These goals are, the city of Sweet Home wants a well-planned, comprehensive transportation system that balances the needs of future land development with a system that serves all users. Development of the draft twenty twenty-five TSP included a community outreach and involvement process that involved the collection of feedback from a variety of community members that informed recommendations used to develop the goals and objectives of the TSP update and identify community needs and priorities. The project team evaluated the existing conditions and future needs of the transportation system in Sweet Home to develop several technical memorandums and a list of recommended projects for the city to consider over the next twenty years. As stated previously, the draft twenty twenty-five TSP is designed to be consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and further implements the goals through the recommendations and projects in the plan. The proposed amendment does not affect any other goals in the comprehensive plan nor create any inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. D, the amendment is appropriate as measured by at least one of the following criteria. One, it corrects identified errors in the provision of the plan. Staff has not identified any errors in the provision in the previous two thousand and five TSP, therefore this criteria is not applicable. Two, it represents a logical implementation of the plan. Because of the comprehensive plan, includes the goals that the city wants a well-planned, comprehensive transportation system that balances the needs of future land development with a system that serves all users, this plan represents a logical implementation of the current Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. It is mandated by changes in federal, state, or local law. TSPs are mandated by Oregon's land use laws to promote thoughtful growth and assist local agencies in developing transportation systems that meet the needs of residents. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. Four, it is otherwise deemed by the city council to be desirable, appropriate, and proper. The draft twenty twenty-five TSP will be brought before the Planning Commission for recommendation and the city council for adoption, which will further show that the amendment is deemed by the council to be desirable, appropriate, and proper. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. Now I'll move on to the North Sweet Home Plan. If you don't mind, I read all of the state planning goal definitions, so can I, if you don't mind, I will skip the actual definition this time, since they're exactly the same, if that works.
That's fine. That's fine.
So, North Sweet Home Area Plan Adoption. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan is intended to provide guidance for future ci- city decisions, certainly for landowners, and a cohesive and functional built environment through incremental development of the North Sweet Home properties. The plan was prepared in collaboration with city staff, stakeholders, and community residents and documents the research, analysis, and community involvement process used to identify system assets and needs. The intent with this plan is to add it as an amendment to and sub-element of the twenty twenty-five Transportation System Plan and current comprehensive plan. The twenty-ten Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan includes goals for transportation systems in Sweet Home, incorporating statewide planning goal twelve. The plan also adds community goals to balance the development needs of the future land development with a system that serves all users. This draft two thousand and five NSH, oops, twenty twenty-five NSH plan is compatible with these goals and further details the recommendation and improvement projects to align with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan is proposed for adoption as an amendment to the comprehensive plan and a sub, contextual sub-element document to the twenty twenty-five TSP that replaces the two thousand and five TSP. This document includes criteria of approval and findings of compliance that support type-four legislative procedure for plan adoption. Decision criteria. Amendments to the comprehensive plan or development code test shall be approved if evidence can substantiate the following. A, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the following. Traffic generation, circulation patterns. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan includes an analysis of existing conditions, creation and evaluation of land use transportation options, selection of a preferred alternative, and suggestion of changes to comprehensive plan and zoning designations, as well as policies and transportation projects identified in the draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan. Therefore, the criteria is satisfied. Two, demand for public facilities and services. The proposed plan does not include any improvements that will increase demand for public services. All proposed improvements are intended to satisfy existing demand and future demand resulting from population growth. Therefore, the criteria is satisfied. Number three, level of park and recreation facilities. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan does not include any changes in the level of park and recreation facilities, therefore this criteria is satisfied. B, a demonstrated need exists for the proposed amendment. The current comprehensive plan includes the goal for a well-planned-out comprehensive transportation system that balances the need for future land development with a system that serves all users. The last transportation system plan that was mentioned in the comprehensive plan was completed in two thousand and five and did not include a North Sweet Home Area Plan. The city of Sweet Home has grown substantially since that time. TSPs are mandated by the Oregon's land use laws to promote thoughtful growth and assist local agencies in developing transportation systems that meet the needs of the residents. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan was prepared in conjunction with the twenty twenty-five Transportation System Plan, therefore this criteria is satisfied. The proposed amendment complies with all the applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rule requirements. In addition, amendments to the development code shall conform with applicable city comprehensive plan policies. Goal one, citizen involvement. The process for adoption for the amendment complies with goal one and meets the requirements of state citizen involvement provisions. Goal two, land use planning. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal two and meets the requirements of the state's land use planning provisions. Goal three, agricultural land is not applicable to the draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan. Goal four, forest land is not applicable to the draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Plan. Goal five, natural resource, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Plan contains a significant area of wetlands and floodplains in the vicinity of the South Saniam River. Much of the areas within the natural resource overlayed zone rich requires additional screening for environmental issues through the city's development process. The communit- communicative effort effect of the planned projects in the draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan will protect and conserve existing natural resources and improve open spaces in Sweet Home. The amendment does not change or functionally alter any previously established protection or conservation measures. The process for adoption for the amendment complies with goal five and meets the requirements of state natural resource scenic and historic areas and open space provisions.
Angela, do you mind pausing for a second? Uh huh. Make sure we're all caught up on where we are in the, on the pages, cuz I got a little mixed up, and so I just wanna make sure everyone's.
I'm right here.
Did you find your spot? I found my spot, goal five. You find where we are, Henry.
No. There's two different plans in there, so I don't know how you organized it, so you might wanna go show them where North Sweet Home is. Oh, she got it. Oh. Okay, she's got it. Okay.
Got it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm, there's five and six.
Yes. There we are, goal five.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, goal six, air, water, and land resource quality. Recommendations and development projects in the draft nor- twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan were designed to protect air, water, and land resources from pollu- pollution and contaminants. The recommendations support the enhancement of air, water, and land quality, ensuring the amendment aligns with the statewide planning goal six. Goal Sarah, seven, areas subject to natural disaster and hazards. The amendment does not directly address potential na- natural disasters and hazards. These hazards are addressed in the other planning processes, therefore the amendment is consistent with the statewide planning goal seven. Goal eight, recreation needs. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal eight and meets the requirements of the state recreation needs provisions. Goal nine, economic development. The amendment does not directly impact or inhibit economic activities or propose any zoning designation changes. The process for adoption for the amendment complies with goal nine and meets the requirements of the state economic development provision, provisions. Goal ten, housing. The provisions of this amendment do not address the planning or development of housing. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal ten and meets the requirements of state housing provisions. Goal eleven, public facilities and services. The amendment does not directly impact or inhibit. Oops, sorry. Wrong one. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal eleven and meets the requirements of state public facilities and services pres- provisions. Goal twelve, transportation. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal twelve and meets the requirements of state trans- transportation provisions. Goal thirteen, energy conservation. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal thirteen and meets the requirements of the state energy conservation provision. Goal fourteen, urbanization. Goal nine and ten, oh whoops, see finding goal nine and ten for more details on how specific draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Plan policies and projects are intended to respond to growing community. The process for adoption of the amendment complies with goal fourteen and meets the requirements of state urbanization provisions. Statewide planning goals fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen are not applicable to city of Sweet Home, North Sweet Home Area Plan. Conforming with the applicable city comprehensive plan policies, the two thousand Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan, updated in twenty-ten, includes transportation system goals outlined in Chapter six. The goals are, the city of Sweet Home wants a well-planned-out comprehensive transportation system that balances the needs of future land development with a system that serves all users. Development of the draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan included a community outreach involvement process involved the collection of feedback from the variety of community members that informed recommendations used to develop the goals and objectives of the North Sweet Home Plan area, plan, update, and identify community needs and priorities. The project team evaluated the existing conditions and future needs of the transportation system in Sweet Home to develop several technical memorandums and a list of recommended projects for the city to consider over the next twenty years. As stated previously, the draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan is designed to be consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and future implements the goals through recommendations and project, projects in the plan. The proposed amendment does not affect any other goals in the comprehensive plan nor create any inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, the criteria is satisfied. D, the amendment is appropriate as measured by the, at least one of the following criteria. It corrects identified errors in the provision of the plan. The previous two thousand and five TSP did not include a North Sweet Home Area Plan. The North Sweet Home Area Plan is an amendment to and sub-element of the twenty twenty-five TSP and current comprehensive plan. It represents a logical implementation of the plan based on the comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan includes the goal that the city wants a well-planned-out comprehensive transportation system that balances the needs of future land development with a system that serves all users, this plan represents a logical implementation of the current Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. Number three, it is mandated by the changes in federal, state, or local law. TSPs are mandated by the Oregon's land use laws to promote thoughtful growth and assist local agencies in developing transportation systems that meet the needs of residents. The North Sweet Home Area Plan is an amendment to and sub-element of the two, twenty twenty-five Transportation System Plan and current comprehensive plan, therefore the criteria is satisfied. It is otherwise deemed that by the city to, council to be desirable, appropriate, and proper. The draft twenty twenty-five North Sweet Home Area Plan will be brought before the Planning Commission for recommendation and the city council for adoption, which will further show that the amendment is deemed by the council to be desirable, appropriate, and proper. Therefore, this criteria is satisfied. So I will turn it over to Garth and Andrew for their portion.
All right, thank you, Angela. Um, I know that was a lot to get through. And goo- good evening, everyone, I'm Garth Appenitis with DKS Associates, part of the consultant team that's been working on the, the Transportation System Plan update and the North Sweet Home Area Plan over the last couple of years. And I've also got Andrew Parrish with me from MIG as well, who's been an integral part of the team as well. Um, we know you have a lot of material in front of you tonight. We just have a few slides that kinda provide a high level and context to kinda wrap this together and show uh, what, what this material really includes. And I know that some of you have been very involved in the last, last couple of years, both with the work sessions we've held, as well as the, uh, attending the, the committee meetings and providing comments, so we, we appreciate your involvement in the process. Adam, if you can go to the next slide? All right, so, um, as Angela was describing, there's, there's really two separate planning efforts we've been going through here concurrently. And they're, they're intertwined, uh, they, they involve each other. One is for the Transportation System Plan. That is the citywide plan, that, that covers the entirety of the city. Um, it's really focused on transportation and it's a statewide requirement that that's done, uh, as part of, as an element of the comprehensive plan. Um, secondly, we've also got the North Sweet Home Area Plan. And the North Sweet Home Area Plan is, is really a focus on what we've referred to as the North Sweet Home Area, which is the area north of the rail tracks. We have, we have a map and we'll talk a little bit more about, a little bit more about that area. But really, the purpose of the North Sweet Home Area Plan is to help, um, re- refine and, uh, lay out the framework for what types of land uses and what framework of a transportation system could play out, just to have a a roadmap or a game plan for that area, so that as opportunities come up, the area can develop in a way that's consistent with the community's desires and community's vision. All right, let's go to the next slide, please. So, just from a, a very high level for the TSP, as I, as I mentioned, and as Angela mentioned previously, it's re- required, uh, as, it's a state-wide requirement, uh, as part of the transportation planning rule. It's a component of the comprehensive plan. Um, it's, it's a long-range, twenty-year plan. Um, we, so we look, we look and think about both the needs of the community today, but also looking ahead of the needs over the next twenty years and how those can be accommodated. Um, one, one of the really key pieces of the Transportation System Plan is along with the community needs. It, it, it lays out a plan for different types of projects and programs and improvements that the city could over, that could, could, uh, deploy over that, over that period of time. And I'll get a little bit into this more in the next slide, but there's a couple of different components of the, the project list. The really key, fundamental, important thing as part of the plan, though, is having projects identified in the plan provides opportunities to, uh, to, to pursue, uh, implementation of those projects. And so, if, if a development comes in and there's an opportunity to build a project, you can point to that it's consistent with the plan. Or if there's a grant opportunity that comes up, a lot of times, it'll be required that the project is identified as part of the plan, which shows that it's con- consistent with the community's vision and needs. So that's, that's a really important piece of the plan, is that it includes these projects, cuz it provides opportunities in the future for implementing those, those projects and needs. All right, so, uh, so, so the TSP, um, again, with, within that. All right. So, uh, so, so the TSP, um, again, with, within that big packet you have, that I think the TSP is about 70 pages or so. Um, I'll just run, run through some of the key components that are part of the Transportation System Plan. One of those is it lays out and elaborates on transportation goals and policies, builds off of the, the existing transportation goal. That's part of the transportation, that's part of the comprehensive plan. Um, and it, and it builds out some other goals that, that expand, that expand that. As, as I noted, it, it identifies current and projected future transportation needs. As Angela noted earlier, part of the process we've gone through over the last couple of years, we, we inventory the system. Uh, we conduct traffic counts. We see where walks exist, where there's gaps that exist. Uh, we project where future growth is, uh, is assumed to occur based on, uh, allowable land uses and when, where there's vacant land. And so as part of that, we develop 20-year traffic projections looking ahead to the future as well. Um, actually, if you can go back, Adam, um, so, so then there, as I mentioned, there's two components of the projects that are, uh, that are identified as part of the plan. One of those is referred to as the financially constrained project list. And so what that really means is considering the, the amount of transportation revenue that's currently projected over the next 20 years, which is a little over $3 million. What do we think that the city could implement with that projected revenue? So that's one, one part of it. And having projects on that list does not bind the city as, as projects come up. That does not, that does not mean that those are the only three projects the city can build or can pursue. That's just kind of laying out the game plan. This is what we think is most likely feasible over that 20-year planning horizon. There's, there's also dozens of additional projects which are referred to as the aspirational project list, um, which go beyond the means of that, of, of what we think the, uh, the, the revenue would be. But it's important again to identify them as part of the plan because as opportunities come up, either through development or partner funding opportunities or grant opportunities, or maybe there'll be a new statewide revenue stream. We don't know, but it's important to have those other projects identified that you can then start picking and choosing from as opportunities come up. Um, the, the last thing I'll note then, one of the other key pieces of the plan, in addition to those projects, is it lays out some of the, the system standards. Uh, one of those is the functional class, classification plan, uh, for, for the, the road network in the city. And so it designates where the arterials and the collectors are. And, and those designations are really important from a, from a federal standpoint, because those, that also, um, that also provides eligibility for federal funding on those roadways. And so that's, that's one of the system standards. Um, functional classification is a key piece that plays into other, other standards and aspects in, uh, system design. Thinking about what the street cross-section is going to look like, what the access spacing requirements look like. Those things often go back to what is the functional classification of a roadway. Um, and then the last, the other item too, that's one of the key parts is the, the mobility standards or, um, one way to think about it is what's, what's traffic delay look like or what's traffic congestion look like? What, what do we, what, where are we setting the bar to allow it to function? And that can be a key thing when there's a development, uh, development review, looking at different development proposals and thinking about, does that trigger additional improvements? So that's a key standard as well. And that's a really high level overview of the TSP. So I'll hand it over to Andrew to talk about the North Sweet Home Area Plan.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Andrew Parrish with MIG. We were, um, brought on for this kind of, uh, interesting part of this project that you don't often see with a transportation system plan. And this is an area plan that's focused specifically on the North, uh, Sweet Home Area. So it's kind of geographically bounded. It encompasses things that are broader than just a regular TSP, like looking at, um, changing around the land uses and the, the zoning, uh, designations and, um, taking a broader look at what types of development might be possible in that area. Um, in order to provide some certainty for the city and certainty for property owners, um, for what, uh, what the future of that land might be. Um, and as you're probably aware, the North Sweet Home Area had a, um, uh, has a designation of recreation commercial. It's got a mixed-use employment, um, comprehensive plan designation there with the intent, um, at one point of a, some kind of a resort community that was um, kind of planned for and, um, hasn't panned out and, and the property owners, uh, came to us and to the state for sort of some, some options and guidance. And we put together a number of, um, uh, case studies and worked with them to, to narrow down what might be, um, reasonable for, for the area. So I think on the next slide, we have a map of the North Sweet Home Area Plan. Um, we, we put together, uh, three different alternatives, um, and a couple of alternatives for what the transportation system in the area um, would look like. But we really wanted to think about the right balance of open space. So there's the quarry park there. There's lots of other opportunities for open space associated with the, the river. Um, and, um, the balance of open space and other uses. So the yellow here on this map is residential. There's some existing residential neighborhoods in the area. The, uh, the, the purple is an industrial designation that takes advantage of the new kind of main spine of, um, uh, of, of roadways connecting through the area and also being adjacent to the, um, the rail, uh, which, which is one of the assets of the area. There's not a whole lot of functioning rail lines that, that might be useful in this way in, in, um, in Oregon. And then the, the red is a commercial, um, area, um, uh, kind of mainly associated with the old mill site there. So, um, up, up in the north of the residential area, there's also a hospitality overlay, trying to keep some of that intent of, you know, maybe this would be a really nice area for some, some kind of hospitality, um, uh, uses in the area. So in addition to just residential, there's, um, there's a concept for, uh, having, um, hotels, camping, um, something along those lines that takes advantage of the, the site, um, being, being near the river there. Um, and the overall intent was to provide, um, kind of flexibility for property owners as well, also giving certainty about, um, maybe future transportation infrastructure, future, um, uh, locations of future industrial uses. Um, so, um, this, this is the, the, the preferred concept that seemed to fit the bill, um, the most, given the input that we got during the process. Um, and I believe that concludes our presentation. So we are happy to answer any questions at this point.
Questions for our applicant?
Seems pretty thorough to me.
Yeah.
I know we've covered it.
Henry.
The Foster trestle, is that aspirational? Or is there something in the plan? And for the sidewalk?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So there's the, the, the two different pieces. So first, first of all, that the trestle itself. Um, there, there's not, as far as I'm aware, there's not any funding or funding identified for that. It is identified as, as a project need. It's one of those aspirational projects. But there's not currently any funding identified for that. Um, unfortunately, trussels aren't cheap. I mean, it's significantly more expensive than some of the other projects.
Had a price tag on it. It was unbelievable.
It, yes, yes. So, so there, there's no funding identified right now. Um, that's one of those things where depending on different, different grants or different opportunities, or, you know, maybe in, in the future, by having that project side, maybe there's an economic development opportunity, an opportunity to get some kind of grant funding to help economic development that could go towards, go towards that trestle or other, other partner funding as well. But that's, that's one piece of it. The other part of it you, you noted was, was the sidewalk. Um, that the sidewalk, there is a, there is a short gap in the, in the sidewalk between the, the multi-use path that was recently constructed on, on either side of it. Um, and, and right now, the, the reason for that gap under the trestle is because there's not, uh, adequate clearance to, to be able to, uh, to be able to, to design it safely and up to standards. And so really while, while that sidewalk infill in itself is a relatively, I'd say cheaper, you know, putting, putting in some concrete for a sidewalk is much cheaper to, than building a trestle. Unfortunately, the, the trestle needs to be resolved prior to the sidewalk being, being completed. And so, um, that's a case where it, it'd be easy, it'd be relatively easy to, to pay for and to improve the sidewalk. But that's totally contingent on the trestle being taken care of first, which is a, a much, a much, uh, more significant improvement.
Garth, can I add to that too? The trestle also is not the city's. So that is owned by the railroad and they are the ones in, um, responsible for fixing the trestle. Um, that is not an actual city-owned property. That's not, um, and as far as I know, and Adam probably knows more about it than I do, but, um, we're kind of, it's kind of a circle thing. We can't fix the sidewalk unless they get in. We can't, you know, the trestle's not going to be fixed. So it's kind of one of those things where we're kind of stuck right at the time, right now. So until we can figure out a process forward with that.
It would seem that somehow or other a sidewalk can be put in, even if it was temporary and you knew it was going to be redone at a later date, but all the rest of the sidewalks are useless out there unless you can get pedestrians under that trestle.
Nature has provided somewhat of an answer. There is a, uh, a trail that people have been using alongside that sidewalk or through that gap. And as more and more people use that, uh, that trail may get a little wider and be not ADA accessible, but there still would be a path. And that's probably the unofficial route that the next 10 to 20 years will take.
But in having a plan like the North, the North Sweet Home Plan in place for the city would help encourage the railroad to maybe make improvements there and like prioritize doing things there. If we looked like as a city, we wanted to improve the other side.
Yeah. Definitely. Something like that's got to be in the plan, even just a single line item.
Yeah, that's one of those areas that it's not just us. There's the railroad, there's ODOT, there's the city. So it's not just a city issue. It's a team issue.
Yeah.
Many overlaying teams.
Yeah, it's complicated.
All right. Well then, do you have any other questions?
I just had just a couple of questions. Um, mine are not global questions, but just a few detailed questions. On page 52, talking about the North Sweet Home Area, um, the 25, let's see, what is it? N dash C two, the Zelkova Street Improvements, um, at $43 million, uh, you know, money is money. But, um, I think you meant the description to go from 24th to 27th on the Zelkova Street segment. It's on page 52.
52?
That, that's, is that page 52 of the Transportation System Plan?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. I know. So, I mean, it, it words as extends Zelkova Street east of 24th Avenue to Zelkova Street. But I kind of think you mean for that, and then with the map, 24th to 47th Avenue. Just.
It, yes, that is correct. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And one other item on page 42, the A6 Main Street Bike Lanes. There's no, there's not a lot of right-of-way and there's not a lot of lane widths. And it indicates a, a goal, an aspirational goal of bike lanes on Main west of 18th Avenue and buffered bike lanes on Main Street east of 18th. Are you intending that? And I'll admit, I wasn't at the early concept meetings. Was that with some changes in the lane configurations? And then a, a secondary question, um, east of 18th Avenue, is that meant to go all the way to the East City Limits? As a buffered bike lane?
Yes. So, so with, with the Main Street Bike Lanes and, um, I think this relative to this, so, so the Main Street Bike Lanes, um, number one, because of the, the, the speed and the volume of traffic on Main Street. It's, it's not a comfortable, enjoyable place to ride a bicycle, even, even with, even with the bike lanes in there. Um, and so especially with the, with the component of the, of the buffered bike lanes, that's intended to, uh, provide some more separation from vehicles with, with the higher, with the higher traffic speeds out there further to the east. Eat, both, both of those projects would require, uh, significant change and, and cost associated with them. And that's why, why they're aspirational. Uh, more likely as a shorter-term alternative. Um, one of the other options is Long Street, um, with, with lower traffic volumes and lower traffic speeds. Um, has, has some bicycle facilities and there's, there's opportunities to, uh, to build additional bicycle improvements on Long Street. And as, as a parallel route, that would probably be the, the preferential location. Back to your original question on, on Main Street, it's still, it's still shown as, as aspirational projects because you, you know, you never know in the future when an opportunity comes up that for whatever reason, maybe there are significant frontage improvements that, that could allow for those types of treatments. Um, but, but certainly undertaking them would, would require a pretty heavy lift.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to tell what the next 20 years will bring. Understood. Yeah.
Other questions for applicants?
None for me.
None for me, but I have a comment afterwards.
We'll allow it later.
Yes.
We'll move on now to our proponents' testimony. That's, uh, testimony from those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Um, there's none. So we'll move to opponent's testimony, testimony from those wishing to speak in opposition to the application. We have none. So we'll move to neutral testimony, testimony from those who are neither in favor nor in opposition of the application. All right, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:18, um, for discussion amongst the commission. It seems thoughtful. Lots of identified possible projects to give options for future planners and.
It, it seems to be, uh, it obviously is a very detailed plan and there's been a lot of work has gone into it and, uh, it's definitely the groundwork for the city to move forward in the next 20 years. At least there's a, a plan which is better than stumbling around. There's no way that in the next 20 years we can outline it. But this definitely gives steps to go through the next 20 years, both in the city and in the North Eugene area. There's been a lot of thought go into this. So I think it looks, looks like a good plan.
I think it's a phenomenal plan. Congratulations to professional people that helped the staff. And, uh, of course, nothing's perfect and it won't be without a few mistakes or things that we'd want to change in the future, but I certainly would be in favor of passing this on to the city council.
Yeah, I agree. I'm very much in the affirmative on this. I like it a lot.
Yes.
Yeah. I was pleased to see a few of the intersection numbers. Yeah. I was pleased to see a few of the intersection numbers and surprised at how the numbers of vehicles there were on the Holly Road. Cause I don't believe that was in the previous one. And that's a significant amount of traffic on Holly.
I was happy to see the, um, new transportation, um, or the traffic, um, studies that were done. Because we're always talking about traffic studies here, especially, um, along those, um, main roads. So it was nice to see some new studies, um, to know what the traffic looks like now. And I mean, this plan will take us into the next 20 years, but it's also going to really help us catch up to what growth we've already had and make sure that we're staying on track.
And seeing what traffic there is now. And you can kind of project forward with development, what kind of traffic we're going to be looking at.
Well, we once heard, Holly and I will confess to this, but Sweet Home was defined as a place where a traffic jam is two cars at the intersection at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Think we've lost that luxury these days.
So the professional people, they probably look at this and trickle a little bit because of our uniqueness.
Well, then I'll look for a motion. Either it's to recommend or not recommend.
I would make a motion that we recommend this tra, I don't know, do I need to read the?
LA 25 dash zero.
Let me get back to that in a minute. Better make this legal. I would make the recommendation that we submit this plan to the city council for LA 25 dash zero one. The transportation system plan and North Sweet Home Area Plan. And, uh,
We have a motion to recommend. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Done. All right, it's passed.
Right. Thank you guys. Thank you, Garth and Andrew.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Great.
All right, Angela, what are our staff updates?
All right, phew. By the way, nice to see you all. Haven't had a meeting since December.
This year is our first one of the year.
I know. And I don't know if you have all met Amber. This is Amber Seymour and she's actually the planning and building permit technician. So kind of taking my old position. So you will see her a lot more. Eventually we will, uh, some of this will be shifted to her. But I didn't want to torture her in her very first planning commission meeting, so. So obviously now that you've recommended the TSP and North Sweet Home Area Plan, it will be going to city council on April 22nd. If any of you would like to join, in case there needs to be testimony from you all, feel free, you don't have to. But that is an option. So hopefully that will go through without any problems and then we will, um, add this to our comprehensive plan for future planning. So, um, as Garth and Andrew stated, um, that one of the benefits to this plan is going out for funding and, you know, having it in our plan. And, um, when we go to look at our capital improvement plans and try to find funding, when they're listed, just like when you, um, did the master parks plan. You know, having those in the plans gives us a better opportunity to find funding and try to get those resources. So, um, I appreciate all the work and time that you guys went into reviewing it, um, through the work session. So thank you for that. Coulter subdivision, the one you voted on, or quite a while ago, um, they are actually starting to move. They've been talking, um, doing RFPs for contractors. There may be some big sewer improvements, um, down 43rd that they're proposing. So, um, keep an eye out for that there, um, the contract or the developers are, have been great to work with. And so that might start moving here fairly soon. Right now, administratively, I have four partitions, um, that I am reviewing, um, right now, which those don't go in front of you guys. But, um, there are four land divisions I'm doing. And then sometime, uh, fairly soon, I will start another large code amendment. The state seems to like to pass a lot of House and Senate bills and they keep passing them. And so I have to get caught up with all the housing.
Wouldn't want you to get bored.
Yeah. So a lot more middle housing, affordable housing provisions came in. So, um, some of the things I have not, I will admit, I have not gone through it yet because I'm trying to focus on one large task at a time. But there are some things that I've been given a heads up that, of things that we purposely put in the last amendment that may be removed because of the affordable housing tax. So, um, can't, I don't know that all the details yet, but there's a few things. One of the ones that I can tell you for sure, only because, uh, Walt, who helped us draft our last, um, amendment, told me that, um, subdivisions are now going to be a type two decision, which are administrative. They won't come to you.
Oh.
Which is.
Man.
I'm not so thrilled about that, but I mean, it's a, it's a faster process, but you know, having that extra review, we will be able to recommend a type three, which is coming to you all, um, if we think it might have some, maybe some backlash for it, because if, um, people will be allowed still, if it's administrative, they could still appeal it and have it come to you. Um, and if it's something that we can recommend, if we think that might happen to just skip the administrative process and have them go straight to a type three. So, and then that way there isn't that risk and you all get to weigh in it. So that's one that surprised me. And actually he said it, it surprised him when he learned that. So I was like, okay. So there's going to be some things like that that might change, um, and, but I'm starting to work through that. And I'll be curious to know some of the other stuff that I get into. So just hopefully my goal is to possibly have this ready. I have to submit it to DLCD first anyway. My goal is probably beginning of summer. There's a lot. So, um, there's a lot of code updates that has to be done. So that is my goal is to possibly have it to you guys by the beginning of summer, you know, late spring, early summer. And then we will move into that. Code is a ever-evolving document. So, um, those are the biggest things this year, so I, not much else.
What's the difference between a type two and type three subdivision?
Type two is.
If you could remind me.
It's not the type of subdivision, it's how it's decided upon. So type two is administrative. So you still have to notice, but it doesn't come to planning commission. It's staff, uh, reviews and makes the decision. Type three is noticed and it comes to you. Type four, you recommend and it goes to city council. So it just, it's all dependent on, um, the process that it goes and who approves it. So, um, and being the one that signs off on it, and I'm not so sure I like the whole subdivision as a type two. But I might not have, I don't have a choice. So, um, yeah, so there's, I'll be curious to see some of the other things. And a lot of it is just to streamline the process and get through the process is from my understanding. So there will be a lot of review on my team. I have a great team. They're all fairly new actually, but they all work fairly well together. So I think that, um, just the review process will be really well. So I'm just crossing my fingers that there's not too many of those. So, but look forward to that. Hopefully it won't be hours and hours and hours of reading code like we did last time, but can't guarantee that.
Yeah. Any update on the, um, Duck Hollow subdivision around the corner on 41st, 42nd?
No, um, last time I, we did an extension. They were still trying to redesign based on the, uh, wetland, yeah, that's in there. We've had some talks recently that that stormwater ditch needs to be cleaned up, but because it's also in the wetlands, we've been trying to figure out how to work with, um, DSL and then their homeowners association because.
Right. There is one.
So yeah, right now that's about the only thing that we, we have been working on with it. But the last, um, extension I got for that was they're still trying to design around the wetland. So, and they still haven't corrected Lily Street spelling.
Yeah.
Which you brought up, I think twice, maybe, maybe more. Nope. Other than that, um, we have a lot of development. We've had a lot of the, I don't know if you, I don't know if I reviewed with you. So the last middle housing, um, criteria that came out was the Senate Bill 458 where you could divide a duplex and then sell each side. So we've actually had quite a few people take advantage of that. So it's, it's still, you know, it's a learning process. People are still trying to understand how that works. So I have become very familiar with that process because we've done quite a few of them. So.
They have to create a property line down that division?
Yeah. So what happens is the, you have to apply for the building permit. Technically you can be doing the partition at the same time as you're building it. But you, the parent lot has to comply with, say it's an R1, it's a duplex and an R1. So the parent lot, which is what it would be before you divide it, has to comply with all the R1 standards, setbacks, um, lot coverage, everything. Once you get the C of O and everything is approved, then you can do the partition lot line and you divide it down the middle. So it applies, all of the criteria applies to the actual parent lot. And then you do the division. Now, what I've been doing is they can start that partition process while they're building. I just can't approve the application until they've gotten the C of O to say that the building, everything is in compliance with the actual parent lot. Then we can complete the partition. That way it speeds up the process a little bit. I still can't render the decision though until the, the C of O. But yeah, there's been quite a few. Yeah. The soonest people find out about it, that's the first thing they want to do. Then the only, there's extra criteria like firewalls and separate utilities. And there's some half street improvements, um, that we are requiring if they want to do that. So there are some extra provisions that we were able to add to it, um, in order to do it. But yeah, we've had quite a few people take advantage of that. So.
Okay. Good.
Other than that, nothing more exciting.
Questions?
Hurry to go home.
All right, then we'll close in, I think it's 7:30.
All right. Thank you guys.
Thank you.